Mayor, I will schedule the meeting. Please.
One minute.
Are we set for the Zoom?
Yes, we are. We can put it on Facebook now. We can be on Saturday in the morning.
Okay, Kirby. We'll do a little bit of a... Do you salute?
Councilman Hernandez.
Here.
Councilman Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Ovaya.
Here.
Mayor Prochamboli.
So, a quick moment. Would you like to do a brief background?
Sure. Government Code Section 54952.3, the members of the city council's successor agency are entitled to receive a total of three hundred per month because of being elected to the city council. They receive no other compensation for sitting as a member of the city... sitting as a member of the successor agency.
So, we're going to announce the item of the vote which is closed session. And is considered with delivery of the motion.
Yes, Mayor and members of council, I just wanted to state that this may go over six o'clock. Just wanted to wait to inform. Thank you.
So, there's an even B on the... No, it's not.
He's on.
Yeah, I agree. You know.
What?
I need to make it so it's only those two. Uh, probably.
Oh, I left it here. Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez. Councilman Ramirez. Councilman Preciado. Mayor Prochemouli. Mayor Ovaya.
Yes, Mayor and members of council. We have for many, many years considered a summer meeting schedule. Oh, okay. And that there would be one meeting in July and one in August. And that July would be the first regular meeting in July and the first regular meeting in August. That's okay. As I was stating for many years, the council has considered each time this year, just about each time this year, a summer meeting schedule, which allows a break time for the council and for staff to, for vacation or just time away. We council has considered in the past canceling the second meeting in July and the second meeting August. And we're asking that council consider scheduling or setting a summer meeting schedule this year. That being Thursday, July 9th would be the meeting in July. And then Thursday, August 13th would be the meeting in August. The regular meeting schedule would go forward in September. There'd be two meetings a month.
Any questions on this, comments? If not, we'll need a motion to approve the change in schedule.
Let's move to prove the calendar has presented.
First, is there a second?
Councilman Hernandez. Councilman Ramirez. Councilman Preciado. Mayor Prochemouli. Mayor Ovaya.
Just a comment. If a special meeting is needed, it can be scheduled.
Moving on to item number seven, which is community reports, special presentations and community reports. One is public works. Scott. Are you on board, Scott?
Good evening, our council members.
Oh, there you go.
Get your microphone. It might be up. I had to push a couple of buttons to get the video to come on. Guess it's been temperamental tonight. Well, anyway, my report. We continue work with the Albrotto group, which is now having an LLC. They have started moving there out there and we're still working with downpour infrastructure such as water and the sewer lines and making sure that they get those installed properly. And we're also looking at working with them to maybe upsize the sewer line in a couple of areas for future developments. And we're in working with negotiations with that. And then obviously, you know, and the koalas continuing their construction. I know my video just kicked out, so I don't know what happened. Anyway, I'll continue. Code enforcement is continuing to do their weed vehicle abatements and property abatements. They have sent out several notices and a lot of people are complying. Their report is attached. Our parks and landscape, we're just continuing to maintain everything that's necessary. The playgrounds, we're still have closed due to the COVID-19 epidemic. And but we are still keeping the one restroom at Rice Park open to the public from seven in the morning till dark. And we will continue to do that for them. We haven't had any worse problems with the restrooms up there than what we normally see. So we're okay with keeping that open. Streets, staffs continue to maintain streets and banners. We did get the, the engineering for the San Joaquin Street project is complete. So we are waiting for the COVID-19 releases. Like we could get into, say, a phase three or so, then we will start advertising and have an onsite walkthrough with whoever's interested in bidding and then put the project out to bid. Hopefully, we can get that started this summer. Water distribution is maintained the same. We did have one water leak on a 16-inch line out on 33 going to the prison. The guys were able to get that. They, they started on a Saturday morning. And by 5:30 Saturday evening, the line was charged and back in service. So I don't know if it's a good thing that we're getting a lot of practice at this, but we're getting pretty good at it. Wastewater collections, we did have three sewer plugs for the month of May. One of them was on the city side and two of them on customer sides. The areas that we were having a lot of problems with, with rags and one area with grease, we're, we're not seeing that so much anymore. So that's going better. And then our vehicle equipment, building maintenance, the staff just continuing to maintain the properties and report to SCA V A's P C D as needed. So are there any questions?
Any questions for Scott?
I do.
There's one, Scott.
Scott, I have received many comments from the committee members for the, for only one restroom being opened up at Rice Park. One of the complaints or concerns that are sometimes there's somebody in there and it takes 10, 15 minutes to go in and out. And also that are sometimes a lady may try to go in and there's, you know, they don't feel comfortable going into the same restroom as a man. So I don't know if you have considered, we consider opening two instead of one.
We could, yes. It's a little more time for cleaning every morning, but we could have two open, yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Scott.
Hey, Scott, this is, this is Tony. I turned off your video because your internet was a little slow. I'll turn it off. Make the audio better.
No problem, Tony. Okay.
Just so you know.
Yeah. Okay, perfect.
Okay, so we move on to number two, which is Avon Theater in the Dallas Center.
All right, do we have audio?
Yes.
All right, perfect. All right. Honorable mayor, members of the council. All right, I'm following Tony's feed over here, so I don't have a copy of the other report, so. All right, actually, here we go. I was able to find it. So on May 13th, we had the last community food drive. It seems that by this point we've, or they've got the formula figured out. I understand that there was another food drive today. Unfortunately, I didn't participate there because I'm currently self quarantined right now. Um, I, I had some exposure to COVID-19 and I'm still waiting from the health department to get back to me before I can come back into work. Hopefully, I'm clean, but, you know, just to be safe. Facility maintenance on the, on the second. On the 15th, we went ahead and looked at the Pegasus room just to see what we would need to upgrade coming into 2020, 2021. The main things we're looking at here are the microphones, just because I know that we're going to be using the Pegasus room for more meetings in the future. Sorry. I have a notepad with me. I'm just flipping through notes. I understand that coming into the future, we're going to need some new microphones. I understand that more of the community is willing to enter or willing to show up for the city council meetings. So I can tell that we're going to be using the Pegasus room more often for this. For renters, we're picking, we're considering picking up a Bluetooth receiver, just because a lot of people are picking up newer phones these days. And they, and they no longer have headphone jacks, so we wouldn't be able to just use the old plug and play method like that we've been using for the last couple of years now. It's just a small, it's just a small convenience for any renters. We're also looking at picking up another subwoofer for theater room one. That one is currently blown out. It's not a, it's not an immediate thing that we need to take care of just because we're not hosting films at the moment. But it is something that we want to look into in the future and it is something that we had budgeted for, for the next fiscal year. As we're looking into upgrading our Wi-Fi solution. I, we have a few more mesh Wi-Fi setups that we're going to be picking up later throughout the year, once everything is set in stone. But that's more or less what we need for the, for the Pegasus room. Um, we're still continuing broadcasting meetings. Unfortunately, I'm not there. I'm happy that Tony is able to fill in for me this week. Um, up until, up until just recently with, with my, with my quarantine, we've been helping Anna with the senior nutrition program with the, with the delivery service every Monday and Wednesday. It's been good to talk to the community there and I've just been leaving small advertising notes with the. notes with the, regarding the Avonel Theater on, with the delivery route that I've been given. Blanca Rodriguez from AES has been giving us some, some, some read-along videos for her, for the recreation programs, online kids' spot program. As well as Othelia from Kings County, she offered us a anti-tobacco video, so I'm just going to be scrubbing through that and seeing what I can, seeing if there's any changes that need to be made before we publish that tomorrow on the, on the Kids Spot Facebook We were working on finalizing the marketing plan for the theater. The big thing that I'm focusing on is I want to attract more out-of-town people. The experiment that I ran earlier in the year, earlier, or mid-September, September, October of last year seemed to have worked out pretty well, so I'm hoping I can focus on that more. But that's more or less where my theater plan is focused. I'm just looking at attracting more people from out of the area, from more from, more from Fresno County and the larger parts of Kings County, so Hanford, Lemoore, Armona, such as those areas, such as, I'm also looking into hosting other events that would also attract other people in. Just speaking with the people from Merced to see what, to see what local events have been able to attract them, the, the local communities there. So I've been working with the gallery, getting the, the monthly car series working again, as well as the, the local car communities across, across the Central Valley. People have seen or have developed interest, they're also becoming very, how would you say, they're also very stir-crazy, they just want to get out there and they want to, they want to attend more social events, so that might be another in once, once the pandemic clears up and we are allowed to host a, a public event such as that. Tentatively, we are working, the recreation department and I are currently working on hosting outdoor movies, sort of like a traditional drive-in style. We're waiting on a FM transmitter to show up, that should be coming in maybe next Monday. What this will allow us to do is that instead of having a full speaker system, what we plan on doing is we had, we plan on having the, the movie's audio sent out via, via, via FM, so people would tune in on their cars' radios and they would be able to hear the movie's audio this way. I had to spend a couple of days researching what, what devices we can use for this, and I was able to find something that was both what we needed and FCC compliant. We are not only, we're not allowed to broadcast anything further than 200 feet, otherwise we could get into some issues if anybody, if anyone from the FCC just happens to roll down Avonel. This is mostly just a safety precaution. It's not listed here, but I understand that, like, the rest of the departments, we've all been working on our budget, but that's more or less what I've been working on for the last month. Is there any questions?
I had a, I had a question to ask. Can you explain a little bit more about the Avonel Theater marketing plan?
So, for the marketing plan, what we're looking at doing is we're looking to attract more people from out of town, just to give, just to put Avonel on a map, so to speak, as far as, as far as local events go. I will more, more likely, I'll be more than likely introducing a lot of my old, old events that I used to be running, more casual, more family-focused gaming events, so game nights and such as, such like that, because from what I understand, the surrounding towns, Kalinga and Avon, or Kalinga and Lemoore, did not have nights like those outside of the, outside of the scheduled, outside of the scheduled festivals that they had. That's what I would be planning for the, just to bring in the local community here in town, as well as getting people from out of the region. We'd be looking at, like I said, the, the car video earlier, the car show series, that would be held once a month. Depending on how large it gets, we'd consider moving it over to, over to the Avonel High School parking lot. It would also give us a room to, to be able to have vendors as well. At larger car shows, there are usually a handful of vendors. Even if we're not hosting, or if we're not selling goods, I've worked at the gallery, they're more than happy to showcase, I know, because some of their staff also happen to be in this community as well. So we're, we're also looking at having them showcase their vehicles and them showcase, or rather, them selling pizza, that's something that they're interested in doing as well. Hopefully, come time for me to be able to find a proctor to take my, sorry, my, my food management exam, I'd be able to host other, I'd be able to use that as a fundraising event as well, just to be able to sell, you know, cooked foods, so whether it just be hot dogs, pizzas such as such, or hot dogs, burgers, stuff like that. The idea is just to bring people from out of town here with smaller events.
Thanks, thanks for the information, thank you.
I just, I'd like to thank Umberto, again, along with Tony and Lupi and Angie and Anna, I think Sheila's sister, they've all been involved in delivering the senior meal, so I want to thank them for that. And also want to thank Umberto, he has gone around to the different businesses, he provided masks and other information, so we, just thank you, Umberto, for all that you've done to keep things going over the last couple of months. He doesn't say much, but he's a doer.
Passion speaks louder than words, you know?
Anything else?
Okay, thank you, Umberto.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to special presentations, none. So item number eight, which is public comment announcements and on the schedule periods. Would you reach a target?
Sure. Any person may directly address the city council agency at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within subject matter jurisdiction of the city council successor agency. State law prohibits any member of the city council from commenting or acting on matters not on the agenda. Three minutes are allowed per person.
Thank you. Anybody for public comments?
Yes, this is Veronica Aguirre. I'm representing the LEAP Institute and our Ivan Environmental Violations Monitoring System. I'd like to report to you, the council, mayor, staff, everyone else online. Yesterday, we had our monthly meeting, and as we, as usual, we continue to get a number of reports in regards to the nuisance of odor coming from the landfill. There's various that if you have a second, you're welcome to take a look at the website and find that information. As I did share with you all on the, at the last meeting, when I was able to present and show you all how to get onto the Ivan website, I invite you all to go on and take a look and see what the community seems to be reporting as concerns. They continue, like I said, they continue, we get a number of reports in regards to the odor nuisance. Yesterday, we had people from Cal Recycle on the line, as well as the Air District, and we were told that the Air District is who has to come out and actually validate the, the nuisance, the odor, the complaint. By the time the Air District gets here, there's many times that there, it's not visible or where they can smell it, so therefore, they're unable to cite the landfill because they no longer exist. So this remains to be a problem. A problem because we, basically geography, by the time the Air District gets here from Fresno to get here and the wind shifts, so does the odor. And so there's no way of detecting it. So what I would like to do is invite the Avonel, city of Avonel, to maybe come up with some kind of plan to help us mitigate this issue so that it won't be such an issue, it's something that needs to be validated, and if we're unable to get a proper validation from the Air, from the Air District that can come and actually cite and find out what is going on, then they said that it's also up to the landowner to, to, to do something about it, which I believe is the city of Avonel, maybe. But, yeah, I invite you guys to attend our meetings, we need to come up with some type of mitigation, and I would hope that you could work with the community and address some of these issues. We also are going to be having, planning to have an online forum, and we're inviting a number of agencies to continue to maybe answer some questions in regards to the permitting process that's currently going on, address some of the issues, the, the reports that we continue to receive and try to address, and see how we can come up with some kind of conclusion of working together. So anyways, this is what I would like to report. Nobody from the city actually has yet to come to any of our meetings, they're from 2:00 to 4:00. Right now, we currently do on Zoom, but it would be nice if maybe somebody would be able to represent the city and attend, it's only one time a month, and it, or even take a look at our website and just see what's going on, and try to help us mitigate some of these issues. And I believe that the community deserves that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Veronica. Anybody else for public comments?
I'm going to read it right now. Have a comment on our live Facebook video stream from Lupi Resen, or from an account named Lupi Resendes. They ask, who is in charge of the vets' hall? That place needs to be cleaned, those chairs are so filthy. Sorry today it like that, but I can't believe we have our elders sitting on them. That's that comment. No other comments at this time.
Very good, thank you. Lupi Resendes, the same. Okay. Well, thank you, Lupi. Anybody else for public comments? Okay, so we close public comment. And we move on to item number nine, which is public hearings. We have none. And item number 10, old business, which is consider second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2020-03.
I'm not sure if John's on the line or not. This item was.
I am.
Oh, okay. Hi.
This is the second reading of the ordinance that was number 2020-03 regarding the amending the municipal code for billing and delinquencies regarding shut-offs. And our recommendation is that we waive the second reading and adopt 2020-03.
You don't need, have a question, we don't need a public comment, open public comment?
So is there any questions on this? Comments? If not, we need a motion to approve the, adopt, the ordinance number 25-03.
And also to waive the first reading and adopt.
Where's the second reading?
Second reading, yes, thanks.
And just for clarification, this is to meet the mandate by the state, correct? So with that said, I'll make a motion to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 2020-03.
Is there a second? Okay, first and second, roll call, please.
Councilman Hernandez?
Hi.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Hi.
Councilman Preciado?
Yes.
Mayor Prost and Willy?
Hi.
Mayor Ovaya?
Hi. I'm zero, it's been adopted.
It will go into effect in 30 days.
Good. So we move on to item B, 10B, which is consider extending local emergency declared on March 24th, 2020.
Yes, mayor, members of council, we are required to, as long as the local emergency is in effect, we are required to review the local emergency to see, basically, to reaffirm the local emergency or to make a finding that the local emergency no longer exists. We, staff are recommending that council consider continuing this item. We're not sure where COVID is going to go from here. We are thankful for all that our community is doing to protect themselves and to protect others around them. And if we keep working together, hopefully, we'll get through this, and hopefully, there'll be a vaccine available. So, but there are many changes going on, things are opening up, we're just asking the community be careful and be safe. So what we're asking is if council approve and support the ongoing local emergency and a specific move prior to the expiration of the 21st day, that at the end of that, there would be an additional 21 days, so it'll actually be a 42-day renewal of this, but we would redo it again on the 25th, but we're asking that council, in the event that we don't need, that we would be covered, that the local emergency would still be in effect.
Is there any questions, comments? If not, we need a motion to extend the local emergency.
Forty-two days.
I saw move to extend the COVID-19 emergency for 42 days.
Okay, that's the first, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Hernandez?
Hi.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Hi.
Councilman Preciado?
Hi.
Mayor Prost and Willy?
Hi.
Mayor Ovaya?
Hi. I'm zero.
Thank you. Avonel, keep up the good work.
Okay, we move on to item 11, new business. Consider resolutions requesting county clerk to render services to the municipal elections for 322.
Good afternoon, city council. I'm here to present the, this item regarding our elections. This year is going to be November 33, 2020, and I am going to let you see our resolutions that we need to be approved, and this is for, as in the past, the city of Avonel requests that the city, the city county clerk records render services to the city of Avonel related to conduct municipal elections and reimburse county of Kings in full services of providing, provided by the county. And I'm recommended to consider two resolutions permitting the county clerk of the county of Kings to render services to the city of Avonel. And the reason why there's two resolution is, one, the city, the county requested the second resolution, and the first resolution was with attachment, is for us to, so they can render the, the services for the elections.
There's two resolutions?
Yes, ma'am.
There's one that we received from the county, and then there's our resolution. It's basically the same thing, however, ours is a little more extensive, so we wanted to make sure that we were covered. That's the reason. Any questions?
Questions, comments? If not, we need a motion to approve the two resolutions to permit the county clerk of the county of Kings to render services to the city of Avonel.
Do they have to be separate since the resolution?
Yes, they should be.
I move we approve resolution 2020-23, which I'm assuming is the county one?
Yes.
But is it just one resolution or two resolutions?
With one motion, we could approve.
Both.
Yes, it's just that they would be separately numbered. Yes. Oh, okay. That's for both of them.
Okay.
Two.
Same with you.
Okay. It'll be 2023 and 2020-24?
Yes. Councilman Hernandez?
Hi.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Hi.
Councilman Preciado?
Hi.
Mayor Prost and Willy?
Hi.
Mayor Ovaya?
Hi. Zero. All right, so we move on to 11B, which is consider juvenile services officer J S O contract for this year 2020, 2021.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I had a problem with my public comment section, I couldn't, I was dialing in from my desk phone, and it couldn't be acknowledged, so I would like to say a few things in a public comment format, if you would allow that, either before my J S O contract proposal or after. It's up to you, sir.
Go ahead, chief.
I just wanted to, for, you want me to do the public comment first, sir?
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to extend our sincere condolences and appreciation to the Kings County Sheriff's Office today. They responded to a mutual aid assist from the San Luis County Sheriff's Office and the Paso Robles Police Department in response to an incident that happened early yesterday morning where a resident Paso Robles was shot and killed, and the police department in Paso was under gunfire, and responding deputy was shot in the face during this horrific incident. The deputy, Kings County deputy, from our county, was shot today during the apprehension of the suspect, and I just want to express our appreciation. And I just want to express our appreciation for their efforts to take somebody violent off the street. The deputy is hospitalized and is doing well. But our thoughts and prayers should be with him and his family during this time. Shifting gears a little bit, in light of the recent events where law enforcement has kind of become vilified across nationwide, I just wanted to share with you an incident I'm very proud of with my staff. It happened last week where Sergeant Carr, Officer Billy Stride, Officer Tyler Stride, and Senior Officer Tapia and Senior Officer Garcia responded to a call for service where a juvenile female was inside of a bathroom with a knife, wanting to harm herself. The parents called, obviously very alarmed, troubled by what they were witnessing. Our staff responded and showed tremendous amount of patience. And as you might know, Senior Officer Garcia is a member of the countywide crisis negotiation team. And their role is to do what they can to peacefully resolve situations. He's been in numerous training to do that. And he was able to talk the young lady into giving up the knife first. So once that happened, everybody was going to be safe. And eventually, about 30 minutes later, she came out of the bathroom and no one was hurt. And more importantly, she was directed to seek some help that she desperately needed. So the family was pleased, so proud of my staff for the way they handled that situation. And I just wanted to pass it along to you.
So move on with your.
Yes.
JSO?
Okay, so currently, the City of Avenel funds 50% of an Avenel police officer to sign to the Reef Sunset Unified School District as a juvenile services officer. The other 50% is funded by the school district themselves. This has been an ongoing agreement between the Avenel Police Department and Reef Sunset since we started back in 2010. And this year's proposed agreement would run, would begin in July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2021. The share of costs for this fiscal year we're moving into would be $55,663.44 each. So the city pays that and the other is offset by revenue coming in from the school district. And so by resolution that Angie has there for you, authorize the agreement, Reef Sunset Unified School District and the city manager to sign the agreement for the continued partnership for the next fiscal year.
Chief, is there any questions? Comments, office? If not, we need a motion to approve ordinance 2020 dash 2025.
It's a resolution. Yeah. It's a resolution. Yeah, he said 2020.
I saw.
So there's. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Hernandez.
Hi.
Councilman Ramirez.
Hi.
Councilman Pereziano.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Woolley.
Hi.
Mayor Olaya.
Hi. Five zero. It's been approved, chief?
Thank you.
We move on to item 11C, consider Avenel Police Department purchase of new speed awareness monitor and message pattern trailers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, but can you hear me?
Yes. I don't care.
And the reason I am here before you this evening is we are requesting to purchase two new speed awareness monitor trailers and message boards. We currently have a speed awareness trailer. However, it's approximately 20 years old and it is no longer functioning. And because of its age, it can't be repaired. We did get a lot of service out of that trailer. What a speed survey trailer does for us is it allows us to capture data from speed and also the number of cars. And how that helps us is we know where to do traffic enforcement in town. And also, it gives us information whether we need stop signs or things like that. The chief has put several stop signs in over town and we've used that trailer to capture data for that type of information. The nice thing about these two trailers is they are completely different than anything else on the market. And you can set them up to run radar, so they will show your speed when you go by. But we can also set it up for a trigger speed where a red and blue flashing light will go off. Now, I spoke with the chief from the Mendota Police Department and they've recently purchased two. And he said that this has really helped reduce their speed in town. And they're really pleased with the trailers. And they've gotten a lot of comments from the public on how effective they believe the trailers are. So not only will it allow us to capture speed data, it will have the lights. But this, these trailers have the capability to do message boards. So that there's 250 messages and graphics that are already programmed in the trailer. But we can put 100 custom messages. By having two trailers, it allows us to do messages in Spanish and in English for special events. So we would be able to reach our entire community instead of sometimes just a portion of it. Also, this grant is for frontline law enforcement services. So the trailers are being purchased for frontline law enforcement services. However, with the chief's philosophy on community-oriented policing, there are quite a few, there are quite a few things that we can use these trailer for. And I think we'll have a lot of opportunities to use these message boards and also the speed capture. So once again, these trailers would be purchased from the supplemental law enforcement services account, which is a grant we receive each year that has to be expended by a certain period of time. The 1718 budget has to be expended by June 30th of this year. So we would be pulling a portion of the money out and closing that account for the 1718 funds. And then we would be drawing some from the 1819 funds as well to complete the purchase. Now, you see that there were three quotes received. And the quote for these trailers is approximately 2,000 cheaper than one and approximately 9,000 cheaper than the other one. The, this trailer does things that those other two do not. And I talked about the speed capture. One thing about this trailer is able to capture speed coming from both directions, which the others do not, which again provides us twice as much data. So we don't have to turn the trailer around and move it on the other side of the street to capture the other side of the lane. Also, these are from stalker radar and these are currently from the same vendor that we purchase our vehicle radars from. So the service and everything, we already have a relationship with this company. And again, we're requesting the purchases and I can answer any questions if you have them.
Questions for chief?
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
I really like the idea of this can also be used as a message board. But the question that I have, since the funds need to be expended by June 30th, do you have enough to buy three maybe? Not two, but three?
We, so we're expending all from one account. And then I'm not sure that we're going to have enough to purchase three. But once we, we have not received, so the money that we receive in the supplemental law enforcement services account isn't the same amount each year. And we have not received all of next year's money at this point. It had not been posted when I spoke with Don regarding the account balance. So I don't know how much we're going to have in next years. But if things go on the past, yes, we would be able to purchase a third one. I just, I'm not able to tell you that we have the money to purchase a third one at this point. But I do believe that by the end of the grant, when it is completely funded, that we would have that. Does that make sense?
Yes, looking forward to it. So can be used at the spoke complex on Highway 33 with some message for, you know, how people try to go in sometimes a little bit too late because in unsafe traffic collision out there.
Oh, sure.
I think, I think our community, we can use at least three of them, those trailers.
Yeah, again, once, once we receive the remainder of the money, that's something we can revisit.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Once purchased, when would they be, you know, put to use in the community? Do you guys have like an estimated time, how long it would take to get them?
So the trailers are currently in stock and the vendor is in the Los Angeles area. And as soon as we provided him with a check and he could schedule it, they would be here. I, I can't give you an exact time, but I would estimate within a couple of weeks. It all depends on when the vendor can deliver them.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If not, we need a motion to approve the purchase of the two radar trailers.
I saw.
Yes, first. Is there a second?
I will second.
Councilman Hernandez.
Hi.
Councilman Ramirez.
Hi.
Councilman Pereziano.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Woolley.
Hi.
Mayor Olaya.
Hi. I'm zero. Purchase away, chief?
Okay, thank you very much. Everyone have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, chief.
So we're moving on to item number 12, correspondence, announcements, closing comments. Any correspondence?
Not at this time.
Okay. Closing comments, Mr. Pablo?
Yeah, we have our, our monthly distribution. And we serve about 150 community members. Public works, I thank Public Works for being out there. Also part of the roadie was out there and some of the community members. It was a hot day and I thank everybody for being out there. Also, I would like to take a moment to recognize the Avenel High School graduating class of 2020. Last week, a roadie had a parade in their honor. And with their permission, I would like to share the video. But before I show the video, I would like to give you a message. The community of Avenel wishes the Avenel High School graduating class of 2020 the best of luck in your future endeavors. Please do not forget our community and come back, come back in the future and the future to come back to Avenel to make it great.
Well.
You know, I also would like to congratulate the class of 2020. And I want to wish every single one of you good luck in your future endeavors. Another thing that I wanted to comment is, you know, I would like to encourage perhaps the city staff to revisit some businesses in town and strongly encourage customers, you know, for the store owners, managers to continue to enforce the use of a face mask. We have had some complaints in the community that they don't feel, you know, the people that are following the procedures to have a face mask and social distancing versus the people that don't comply as much, they don't feel as safe. So, you know, the other day personally, I went to Big Five and they did have a strict policy in which they didn't let me in, but that a face mask, you know. So I would like, you know, perhaps if city staff could just revisit, you know, a courtesy reminder that it's important for customers to wear a face mask and that is all.
Yes, I also would like to congratulate the, all the graduates from Avenel High School. It was a nice and great parade. I would like to ask council or city staff or whoever it may be to see if it'd be possible to send a copy of this video to every graduate. I think it'll be a nice gesture if we can have it sent in and aware of the city or something. I would like to see a support of the council to see we can actually reach out to each one of them, make sure that they get a copy of this. This is a nice video.
You know where I'm looking. You see, you see which way I'm looking?
Yes.
But it will be closer after this hearing. I'd want council to see it first.
Beautifully done, beautifully done.
And I also would like to, you know, how businesses are in churches and, you know, meetings are open to the public. I would like to advise the community and everybody to be safe, to keep the.